Good evening, I'll call this meeting the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, once again we thank you for life, health, and strength. Father, we thank you for this assembly. We ask you to come down and guide and direct our decisions. We ask you to go with us and be with us, and then all done well in the interest of the city. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Drake, roll please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tafran, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. I do want to note both council members who are not here, let us know ahead of time. They wish they were here, but they can't be, so we appreciate them letting us know that. Valid reasons all. Our approval, first item on the agenda is the approval of our January 20th council meeting minutes. And council, you've had these well in advance of this evening, had an opportunity to look them over. Now's the time to make any changes, if any, or needed. If there are none, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have got some appointments tonight. Mr. Gilliam, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have three members of the Recreation Advisory Board that are up for renewal. And if approved by council, Brian Thomas of Ward 1, Tommy Hall of Ward 5, would serve new terms that would expire on December 31st of 2025. And the mayor's opponent, Rick Coloff, would serve until December 31st of 2023. And these are submitted for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Dan, you've got the next one, please.
Yes, Mayor. The Development Authority of Cartersville has three board members that terms have expired. They wish to continue serving. That is Sonny Miller, Tommy Strickland, and Walter Mahone. If approved, they will continue through January 6th of 2026.
Questions, comments, or motions on this one? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The nominating board for the Downtown Development Authority did meet and would like to recommend Alan Sanders for reappointment to a full term that would end February of 2026, and Carson McCrery for appointment to fill a term that would end February of 2023.
Questions or comments on these appointments? If they're done, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Manino, if you will get us started on AZ 2201.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed annexation and subsequent rezoning to the R7 zoning category. The tract is approximately 24.7 acres to the west side of Litchfield, on the backside of ATCO subdivision. Their planning commission did hear this. Planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed 80 lot annexation and the 80 lot subdivision in the R7. Since the first reading of this, we did receive an email this morning opposing it that did mention concern that they thought there could be a cemetery on the subject property. With that, though, again, planning commission did recommend approval. There was opposition at the first reading that was also at the planning commission meeting, and they had mentioned concerns about traffic and a few other things.
Mayor, if I may interject here?
Please do.
Basically, when we received the request, the information that a cemetery was there, we reviewed all the sources that the county had, plus did some, ran the deeds and histories of that property, and checked the standard archaeological and geological websites that are out there. And basically, there is reference to there being something called the ATCO Hammond Cemetery that is supposed to be located somewhere near the Richard Bell Ballfields. Doesn't state exactly what property, where it's located, or anything else. And nothing we were able to find pinpoints the location of a possible cemetery. I do want to remind council, and of course, anybody in the audience, that the city already has ordinances in place that if there is a cemetery in place on a property that is being developed, that they are not allowed to interfere with the cemetery. They would actually have to leave that area alone and actually leave a public access point of view for members of the public who would wish to view that cemetery. However, additionally, if developer wanted to, there is a process under state law, which is very expensive, but there is a process which you can actually relocate a cemetery and reinter the individuals there, which has been used by a few developers in the past, and other developers have decided not to use it. But that's the brief information we have for you today on that cemetery.
But long story short, our decision making this evening really has little or no benefit because there's places already in place relative to that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir. And as Mr. Manino steps away from that podium, I will open a public hearing for AZ 2201 for the zoning portion of this request. And we'll do two public hearings, one for zoning and then one for annexation. So anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against the zoning portion of this application may step forward and do so at this time. And when you do, please, sir, and anybody else that wishes to speak, if you will give your name and your address so that we can be included in the minutes, and our clerk will appreciate that.
All right. I'm Ryan Roney from 22 Akron Street, just one street down from Litchfield. I don't claim to know the rules or laws of proper posting of intended development, but the way in which this prospective project was announced within ATCO was downright unethical. Postings at the west end of Pathfinder and Wingfoot along Litchfield do not allow the majority of ATCO community, members who would be affected by this project, to even learn of its existence. If Goodyear is to be one of the main thoroughfares for access of this new neighborhood, why was notice not posted at that point where the road was to be extended? Further, Goodyear is to be such a main thoroughfare that to accommodate this new neighborhood, traffic at Cassville will have to be addressed. It's already difficult enough to enter and exit from that intersection. And then, once you get through the end of Goodyear, as it narrows down, you have further issues of traffic as it goes on the veer over onto the, across Parmenter in front of the Baptist Church. Further issues of local traffic patterns, there, this plan has another exit coming out on the south side, coming out of the west end of Wing, of, sorry.
It's Wingfoot.
Not, not, it is, yeah, Wingfoot. And that is going to exacerbate issues that already exist on that road with the residents towards Mayflower who have to have that street parking. Any of the forward-facing houses in the neighborhood have that. So, and the traffic pattern that they're already, that they're looking to establish in this new neighborhood does not match with the way the pattern is flowing in ATCO. They're coming in, not wanting to be a part of the neighborhood or demonstrating anything. They're just trying to shove their way into a space. This adds a secondary issue. If the city does allow all of these homes to come in here, are they going to remedy the issues that currently exist on roads with current traffic levels? This increase of traffic patterns there, is that going to be addressed? The current size, the current condition of the roads needs to be updated. There's enough cracks and stuff throughout the road. My car rumbles down that street. Are they going to repave that and make it where it can handle that extra level of traffic, where current projections of whenever it's intended to be fixed right now would have to change that pattern with these extra houses? We enjoy our quiet living in that area, and despite other issues, and we are working as a community to deal with that with policing, in general, it is quiet back there, and this is just going to be a further increase and change the conditions that we are enjoying and have enjoyed at that point. That's all I have to say, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. I'll just point out, and I'm always appreciative, and I think everybody on council is always appreciative of people that come before the city and care enough about the city to speak. I will address the thought that this was not handled in an ethical manner because there is, there are guidelines that we follow where all adjacent property owners are notified. It's been posted in our planning commission, and there was a public hearing there.
But these-
There are two here, there are signs posted on the property.
The signs that are posted on the property were strategically placed where the majority of the neighborhood that would be affected would not see them. No one drives to the end of those places unless they're going on to Litchfield. People who would have seen that sign, if it was at the end of Goodyear, would have known that there was something going on there. That is, they shoved it into the farthest corner of the neighborhood so that the fewest number of people would know that this was happening.
I'll simply state to the ethical side of it, or to make a claim that the city has acted unethically, I would be-
I don't know if, I don't know who has to post it, if it's the city or them, but it was, it was, it should have been marked better for the rest of us to know. Goodyear is-
Under state law, the property, the signs are to be posted on the actual property itself.
So then-
We actually posted two as opposed to one.
No.
Right.
There are the two posted on the property, and it says here on that plan, go back to the image of the plan, you have what apparently is part of that property coming off of Goodyear. And that is the thoroughfare where the people that are in that neighborhood are going to know about it. So why post it in the farthest corner of the property where the majority of the community that is going to be affected by it is not going to see that notice versus at the point where that notice will be most effective to the people who are affected by this? So that in and of itself is a good enough measure to let the rest of us know what we want to be a part of with that.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, you did.
Water, electricity mix, and that's- Let's continue on with the, with the public hearing with AZ 2201, the zoning portion of the request. And again, I'll ask anybody who wants to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time.
My name, well. I wanted to say good evening to the council and the mayor.
Leslie, if you, and I know you did last time, if you'll give your name and address for the clerk, please.
Okay, I was going to, that was next. My name is Leslie Crawford. My address is 25 Litchfield Street, Cartersville, Georgia, 30120. And this in regards to Litchfield. I am an adjacent property owner, and I know I, I did want to address two things that came up. One was the cemetery. I actually enjoy history, and I've enjoyed talking to the old timers. And there's actually an attitude in the neighborhood that you can't really make a difference. And it's affected people's involvement. And, you know, I think that's sort of sad. But an old timer told me about that cemetery. He indicated it is on the, close to the end of Goodyear, in that property directly across the street. And that for years, they moved the headstones to Mow, and those headstones have deteriorated. And he says the graveyard is probably from the 1900s. Probably no bones, maybe teeth. But he grew up in the neighborhood from, he was born there. And he says there is absolutely a graveyard there. They did rubbings as children. Anyway, I want to say I know growth in any city is given, a given, and expect it to be positive advancement for all. I understand the development of the land offers a worthy opportunity. Therefore, I'm not against the development of these new homes at all, but not as proposed. I plead that all those involved, the planning committee, the mayor of the city council, and the developers carefully consider it. One of the first things that I feel like y'all really need to consider, honestly, is the proposal does go against the designated usage of this parcel as identified in the future land use map. The infill neighborhood should be low to low-medium density. That's identified, and it's also outlined in the application. And it actually is stated falsely. That sort of bothers me, and I feel like it bothers a lot of people. Some things I want noted in the application. There is a analysis section that, under public comments, does say none documented as of 1/4/21. That's not true. There's also, under the zoning powers, item E, the zoning proposal, it states, "The zoning proposal should not result in a use that will have an excessive or burdensome use of streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools." Tommy Sanders, Public Works Director, did state at the last meeting that the neighborhood it proposed could actually increase to and fro traffic, so both ways, and I guess, delivery trucks and whatever, by 770 passages a day. That's a lot. He additionally stated that these streets were very dated, although some improvements have been made. And he noted that some of the infrastructure, including utilities, date back to the 1940s. My concern about the excessive or burdensome use of existing streets were not recorded in the minutes. They included concerns of poor passage due to narrow streets, mostly one-way, and with street parking on almost all of our streets. Additionally noted that there were only two congested entrances into the neighborhood. And the neighborhood includes the original historic houses. They are considered historic, even though the district isn't, which I question. And it includes those infill newer properties built at the back of the, sort of the back of the neighborhood that people have to access through ATCO. It's a total of about 350 homes. Then we have Hicks Park traffic and ATCO Baptist Church traffic. That's a lot of traffic on old roads. Item F in the application asks whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the adopted local comprehensive land use plan. It is answered the following. "The proposed zoning would conform to the city's land use plan for the area, low and low-medium density residential." This is not true. I also did recognize that property values could go up, which could be positive for some. That could also have a negative impact on how low-income families and seniors in that community could have increased taxes, often resulting in displacement of these people. This is often, often referred as gentrification, which is something we should all watch for. It also, I also ask close attention, be paid to the local comprehensive plan available on the city's website for concurrent years. I guess the last update was 2018. As filed, they refer to ATCO in every one of those documents eight times. It's the ATCO Historic Mill Village. Yet it is not a historic district, but it is recognized as a historic neighborhood. There's four neighborhoods identified as character areas, which include ATCO, Old Town, Cherokee, Cassville, and Weston. Some of the specific things identified for ATCO are, you know, they've been identified since 2007. That's 15 years ago, and we've seen very little progress. Some of those things actually speak to this infill neighborhood being in the same scale and size, existing street patterns being recognized, funding public infrastructure is necessary, target code enforcement efforts in this area, and y'all know me for code enforcement. I have been recognized as a squat box. Apparently, I've turned in like 27 complaints because nothing's done about it. And I watch code enforcement drive up and down the alleyways, go past trash.
Ms. Crawford, I appreciate your frustration that you may feel like you have in that. I want to get you back, I want to get you back to the public hearing that we're in for the annexation of this property, for the zoning of this property.
Yes. I, basically, it comes down to, I feel like ATCO is a needy community. This zoning does affect the whole community. And I understand where he's coming from, that the whole community is not aware. I had actually planned to get out more and talk to people in the community that I feel like are going to be affected and should hear about it. I've had a death in the family, and I just haven't been able to. But basically, I just want to say, this is about the whole community. I plead to you prayerfully, thoughtfully, and with kindness to the community, reconsider the zoning. It's not what is laid out in planning. And that concerns me. I would hope that they stuck with what they recommend. Anyway, thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Crawford? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. It's okay.
My name is Tracy Donnelly, and I'm at 26, 27 Litchfield Street. And I'm a new homeowner, and I just purchased the home in November. And I really wanted that particular house because of all the trees on, I mean, you go down, you go down Litchfield, and it's just trees. It's just beautiful to me. Sorry.
It's okay.
I don't know why I'm crying. It's just a special place for me and my son, and I want to keep it quiet and for the kids to be able to enjoy that street. And that is going to be the main thorough for the subdivision. And I just, if I could have my wish list, it would just be another entrance. I know it will be developed, but if there was another entrance, that would be my wish list, and to keep the trees that are on the street, the street line. So we would have a buffer, and we could be able to look out to the trees instead of people's backyards. And they could have a buffer too. So that's just my wish list.
Thank you for your comments. We'll continue with the public hearing for AZ 2201, the zoning hearing for this. And anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Porta, Mr. Lovell, members of the council. My name is Mike Howren, and I reside at 164 Solins Road in Cartersville. We are proposing this rezoning for the proposed subdivision that we've heard about in the last two meetings. We feel like this is going to be, you know, a good opportunity for a development in the city that will allow for homes, you know, for our working, our working folks. We're looking to have house prices, again, in the starter home range, which that changes daily with where we are now. But that is the proposed development that we are looking at. And we did meet with Mr. Gilliam with the Parks and Rec. I did want to update council on that about a week and a half ago or so, and about the donation portion of that property, and he seemed interested in that as well. So we're hoping that will be something good for the city, as well as the citizens of Cartersville. We just ask for your consideration of this request and appreciate it.
So you've heard some of the concerns of members of the neighborhood. And I guess I'll speak directly to, is it Donnelly? I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any, and again, I know you're in the very preliminary part of this, but in hearing some of the neighborhood, the existing neighborhoods' concerns, anything that you can offer that might assuage some of those concerns, especially relative to buffering or plans that you might have for the back half of those properties?
So again, early in, in the preliminary stages, so it's hard to tell exactly what's going to happen with that, with that plan as far as, once we get into further engineering. You know, they're going to go out and survey, there's a belief from our engineers that a lot of those trees, or some of those trees, may actually be on the right-of-way of Litchfield. So they're going to go out, survey, see if that's the case. If that's the case, then obviously the trees will stay and remain where they are.
Go on to the city, basically.
Yes, yes. So otherwise, it will be backyards to the neighborhood. There'll be no entrances off of Litchfield, so it would be backyards backing up to that. You know, as a, as a developer or builder, either one, you're not going to take trees down that you don't have to. So if it's pertinent for, you know, some of those trees to remain, you know, the builders, future builders of those lots or developers, they may stay if they're not in the way of a home or something like that because that would be, you know, advantageous from a cost standpoint to not remove trees unnecessarily.
Any other questions? Looking intently. Any questions?
I know that this is like a preliminary, I know this engineer, the drawing that you have is a conceptual drawing, but I mean, just from my, from my viewpoint, it looks like it's pretty, I know the lots in ATCO are pretty small. Are they going to be larger lots than those, or are they going to be in line, pretty much what they?
And Randy may be able to better answer that from, from knowledge of those exact sizes in ATCO, but they're, they're similar, it's R7 zoning, I believe, where ATCO is currently. That's what we're seeking here as well. So it's a compatible zoning with what is already there. A lot of the lots are going to be, you can tell in the cul-de-sac areas, you're going to have larger lots there. And then you do have some lots on the conceptual plan that are as small as about 6,000 square feet. Nothing on the conceptual plan is lower than 6,000 at this, at this point. But they would be similar to what's currently in ATCO.
How many lots are there?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Proposed right now.
Randy, is that considered, you know, referring to density, high density, low density, is R7 considered a median density? It's considered median density?
And again, in trying to, that lot size and those home sizes, I'll ask you, Mr. Howren, is that going to be consistent with the, with the homes that currently exist in ATCO, the lot sizes and the square footage sizes?
The lot sizes should, obviously, square footages may differ because of, some of the ATCO homes are much smaller than what may actually go in the neighborhood. the Atco homes are, are much smaller than what may actually go in the neighborhood just from, that was what was built, when those homes were built. But as far as lot sizes, they should be consistent with what's in Atco. And again, R seven zoning is consistent with the current zoning in Atco as well.
And I know that we don't, we don't take the aesthetic, I guess, the, the design of a house, we don't, we don't zone by finished product.
Right.
It's not what we're tasked to do, but I guess, again, in the interest of people that have concerns about this neighborhood, is the aesthetic, is there going to be a concerted effort to have this blend with the current neighborhood or stick out from it, or is it?
Again, with the age of the Atco homes, I don't think it's going to be, you know, a blending factor that's going to go in because just the older nature of some of those houses, but it's going to be a nice product, probably craftsman-style type homes. They're not going to be huge houses, so you're going to be looking at one- and two-story houses, three and four bedrooms most likely, and square footage is ranging maybe from fourteen to eighteen hundred square feet if I had to, you know, try to pinpoint a range for you today.
That's my idea. Thank you.
Mayor, to answer your question, just doing a brief scan of about four lots on Litchfield Street, they average point one eight acres according to the Bartow County GIS, which is roughly seventy-eight hundred square feet.
So. Thank you. All right, any other questions for Mr. Howren? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Continue the public hearing for the zoning portion of this request, AZ twenty-two oh one, and again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Come on up. Yes, sir.
Am I able to ask a question?
You may direct questions to the board, not people in the audience.
Yeah, Sam Franklin, fourteen Riverside Court. I was just asking, just in interest, what was the reason to avoid, is that not, is that Burt Hickory Road on the other side of that project?
Railroad.
Oh, there's a railroad there.
There's a railroad, TSA railroad. Got you.
Okay. Well, that answered it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of this request and open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the application, AZ twenty-two dash zero one. And again, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this And actually, I've got a question for the applicant, if you don't mind stepping forward, sir. Relative to the annexation, if this property were not annexed, would this subdivision still happen?
Yes, sir.
What additional cost would you be incurring by bringing it into the city versus not bringing it into the city?
Not, there's no additional cost.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I have one question for you, actually. Sorry, no, you're good. I've announced we're getting out, been playing this ball in Atco, been around that neighborhood, so kind of an idea how roads are, and then parking, following that, talking about parking and stuff like that. So I will admit, I am a bit concerned about the amount of traffic for eighty lots through that area. Is the number of lots conducive to, obviously to, or probably, could it be reduced down and still be able to build a similar, or close to what you're arguing for?
In, in this day and age of, of land cost and material cost and building cost, especially land cost at the moment, you know, our, our job as developers is to try to put a product out there that will sell, and then also get, you know, and again, the density could be five thousand square feet if we end up doing the optional density bonus. Our lots are six thousand, and I actually had notes in the preliminary layout that we've got here, the average lot size is a little over seventy-four hundred square feet, so very close to what Mr. Lovell had stated as far as the average with what's currently in Atco. So to answer your question shortly, you know, probably not, to be able to reduce the lot, lot numbers, and then still make the neighborhood decent. Thank you.
Yes, sir, come on up. Again, I know you did it before, but please restate.
Yes, Ryan Roney, twenty-two Akron Street. If, if they do, in the case of annexation, that would pay for any maintenance that would be incurred on those roads, because if it's not annexed, then we have a neighborhood in the county that's exclusively going to be using Atco roads. There's no other access to this neighborhood except through Atco, and that's city roads that would be taking the brunt of all of that. The, part of the annexation and some of the ways to get around, for the options that they're hoping for, was that donation of the park, and, and annexing that and making it a park, a part of, part of the city would require dealing with other issues that are currently going on in Atco. Me and some other members of the community were at the police station a week ago dealing with stuff going on that backside of the neighborhood. A park back there could actually be a location of further issues currently in the way things are running in the, in the neighborhood. So if that, if that is annexed into the city, that becomes a problem that the city has to address with that. And, and just with that, the, the, again, the annexing that in the city continues to incur, then, then puts you on the responsibility for all the other issues there, and there's the issue with then you paying the county. It wasn't clear, don't know, does the city then pay extra to when they pay the county for the electricity, because that's the way electricity is set up in that area, is on the, on the?
Yeah, the way it would work, again, in the scenario that you're asking, if it's not annexed in the city, that's why I asked Mr. Howen that question. Right now, the way that property is and the way it's zoned in the county, they have every right to build that subdivision without annexing it in.
Yes.
They would build it without the city's oversight or following their standards, they would have to find, follow the county's standards, which are similar but, but different in some ways.
Would the city have to allow them to build the road access at that point on a city road?
Yes.
Okay.
It is a public street, and if the property was developed, they would be able to tie in to that public street.
Just curious, not, not trying to hinder them.
No, I understand.
Okay.
But yeah, that's.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to add that point there.
Okay.
So if they are going to build anyway, the, in the annexation, this needs to be approached to make it a fair thing, a fair thing, that's all I'm just trying to suggest.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the annexation portion of the request, AZ twenty-two dash zero one, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the annexation hearing for AZ twenty-two dash zero one and turn it over to council for further discussion or any other questions, if you need anything from staff. I turn it over to you for consideration.
Mayor, before y'all start considering, I just wanted to make a brief announcement. For those of you who are speaking, who have spoken tonight or plan to speak later in the meeting, there's actually a sign-up sheet outside on the little table right there. If y'all would, please put your name and address there. It just helps the city clerk when she goes back and does the minutes. Thank you.
And again, council, right now, I'm just asking for further discussion. If y'all say there is no further discussion or any questions that are needed, I'll remind you that as you may or may not choose to make a motion or vote, that the motion would be for the annexation portion of the request first, and then there will be any other discussion, and then we would have another motion and a second for the zoning portion of the request. So your discussions or your questions right now would be relative to the annexation of part of this application, AZ twenty-two dash zero one.
I don't have any further discussion. I'm open to a motion.
Okay, well, motion's in order.
I make a motion that we approve the annexation of the property into the city.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now for the zoning portion of AZ twenty-two dash zero one. Randy?
I, no. You had a question?
I don't have, I don't have any discussion, but I, I have a motion.
If there's no other questions or need for discussion, then a motion's in order.
I make a motion to approve the zoning.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on with SU twenty-two dash zero one. Mr. Manino.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. This is a proposed special use permit. The applicant is proposing a garage apartment, is, has a house under construction on Bates Road, four sixty-four Bates Road under our ordinance. It's a detached garage, three-car garage that they're proposing the apartment in. We do require a special use permit for that. Planning Commission did recommend approval. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay, any questions for Randy on this item? If there are none, I'll open up a public hearing for SU twenty-two dash zero one and ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU twenty-two dash zero one, turn it over to council for consideration.
I'm going to say I have a motion.
What's that?
So I'm, all I can add is, I have a motion.
Okay, motion's in order.
Motion's up, Randy.
Second. All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up is T twenty-two dash zero one, Randy.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. With that, it is staff-initiated based on feedback from a previous council visioning. It works twofold. It does allow for planned residential projects in the, as permitted uses with a special use permit in the downtown business district. Right now, residential's only allowed above, behind, or below. This would allow individual residential buildings as part of units and part of a planned project if they came in with a special use permit. Special use permit would have additional standards requiring architectural renderings, exterior elevations, a breakdown of square footage in bedrooms, and density of their proposed project, and a parking plan with that said project. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for T twenty-two oh one, and once again, ask anybody wishing to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T twenty-two oh one and turn it over to council for further discussion or consideration.
Council votes, Mayor, I do appreciate Randy and Dave taking the time, because this did come out of the visiting session a year ago to look into this, and if council wishes to move forward, it's on the table for your recommendation or your approval.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, the capes by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, road abandonment in Everton Estates.
Yes, Mayor, as y'all recall, ten, ten or so years ago, the city approved a subdivision called Etowah Preserve, which was right off of Center Road, north side of Center Road, adjacent to I-75. Due to the economy, that subdivision was never completed. Back in two thousand and nineteen, you had a new individual come in who wanted to take over that subdivision and change it from a proposed single-family subdivision to a townhome subdivision. And as part of their proposal, since it was going to be a townhome development, would be for the existing streets there to become private. The city has provided notice to the adjoining property owner, which in this case is the individual making the application, and under the state law, the process is that the city provides notice to them, and then we have a public hearing and allow any member of the public who wishes to raise an issue regarding this to present that to council. And at this time, the public hearing is open. If anybody wishes to speak on this, please come forward. Mayor, I would ask you to close the public hearing.
No, I was going to say, you got elected, but thank you for opening up that public hearing, Mr. Lovell. Thank you for the insight and the explanation of that. So seeing nobody come forward for the public hearing, I will close the public hearing for the abandonment of Everton Estates, and then we'll move on to the next item, which is a resolution relative to that Everton Estates.
And basically, this resolution abandons the existing right-of-way in what's now called Everton Estates. It reserves to the city any and all existing utility easements, or gives the developer the right to provide the city a separate new easement for all of those. It also authorizes a quitclaim deed from the council to have that, have those public streets revert back to them. It is recommended for your approval by staff.
I do have a question relative to, I know one of the stipulations was having an agreement with one of the property owners that was, that needed to get settled prior to all this, and we've been told that there has been an agreement is, I mean, both parties have told us that there's been an agreement that's been reached relative to that?
I personally wasn't told by the developer, I think David Hart agreed, was, the developer told them that there was an agreement in place. I sent an email to Ms. Tilly asking her whether there was an agreement in place, and she said yes as to this track, but whenever the adjacent track gets developed, there will still have to be an additional agreement put in place on it.
And again, that's because it's a property, it's between the two property owners, there's really no place for us to be.
Yeah, we don't know the details of it, that's just, all we cared is that they addressed the issue between themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Is the hell of a case.
I don't believe.
Yes, I believe, gentleman's in the back room.
Oh, there, there, oh, yeah.
You have a question?
Yeah, I do that.
Come on up. If you would, please, sir, you're naming your address for our clerk, please, sir.
Benfield, two thirty-one Melrich Avenue, Atlanta.
What type, if you could describe or explain to me what type of townhomes are going to be, any of them, first stories, control rooms, what type of target market, all that kind of?
Right, they're, they're all, they're all, they're two and three-bedroom townhomes, all two stories. Each have a, an attached garage. The buildings are anywhere between four units and some up to eight units, so they kind of differ. It's a lot of topography there, so a lot of variation that we had to work with. So that's, that's essentially what it is.
How many units have gotten along?
It's, yep, it's a, it's a hundred and eighty-three.
Hundred and eighty-three.
Mm-hmm.
And were you guys the original, I just couldn't remember the company that's going to the neighborhood, like the six families?
No, we, we bought the, we, we bought the existing property, it was kind of, some site work had been done, and was in rather disrepair when we, when we bought it, and uh...
The property actually went into foreclosure and was owned by the bank when they acquired.
I just, that's my award that I represent, and I'm a little concerned, perhaps like I said, about the development in Atco, about the amount of units that are going in here, the traffic, the impacts it had in the area, the, the demographic, the targets, the territorial market is going forward. Now, I understand that you guys did, I'm not a big fan of us rezoning or anything, so if a property went into the city and then the plans changed, I understand you guys did that, so I'm not going to take the pros and cons on that part, but you, but I do have some serious concerns about the amount of units that will be there and the impact it will have in the area. Like I asked Mike earlier, is there any way possible that it be limited down to a fewer number and still be a profitable endeavor?
So, so this is, this is an, an active construction site? We, we...
Mr. Redd, this is already been zone development approved, it's been to, this is counsel several times and Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, we're addressing here is the abandoned.
I understand we're addressing, I'm just curious.
And they've already submitted, if my memory is correct, David and Randy, they've already submitted development plans, they've already been reviewed by staff, and they've already been approved for the total number of units they're building and amenities and all of that other stuff.
I understand. I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the resolution before you this evening relative to the abandonment of those roads? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Currently, three to one. It takes four votes for something to pass. I will vote in the affirmative, so the resolution passes. Uh, next item, Mr. Hampton, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here requesting authorization for Mayor to sign this agreement. It's our standard interconnection agreement that we have to do when residents install any type of generation, in this case, solar generation, on a residence at Six Nicholas Lane here in Cartersville. Mrs. Laura Nelson is the property owner. And we have done our cursory inspections, everything checked out the way it was supposed to, and we do request that you sign this agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. Bring before you a co-location lease agreement with Bartra County. It is a lease agreement that allows us to be on the tower at Joe Fink Harris Parkway. Is a part of our AMI connectivity program.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Pican.
Good evening. This is a request to purchase Power DMS, which is a database which will organize and manage our certification files, Calea files, training files, field training files. We don't currently have this capability, and it'll save manpower hours if we purchase it. The total cost is ninety-nine thirteen oh two for the first year, and then nine thousand dollars a year after to maintain it. And it'll be paid for with federal asset forfeiture funds.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions for the chief? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Mr. Dixon, close us out tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our annual tax bill for our natural gas storage facility in Monroe County, Mississippi. The bill is for seven thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents. It's a budgeted item, and we recommend your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Michael on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening?
My name is Sam Franklin. I live at fourteen Riverside Court off of Dolphet Ferry. I did wish to speak on regards to the Dolphet Ferry corridor project, I think is the way that it's being referred to. As a resident in that area, I did have some concerns with the project, and there, there has been, I would like to ask a question if you could answer it. Has there been other opportunities of information being given as far as discussions of the project or anything that maybe I had missed? I know there is a website to go to that has been put together for this project by the DOT, and I did have an opportunity to look at that. There was a card that went out in the mail, you know, kind of expressing opportunity to give input on that project and concerns. I, I just, I don't know how to operate that way as far as having questions, you know, kind of just putting it into like a website or something, and I approach.
I can answer that for you. I don't want to interrupt you, but I spoke with Tommy Sanders this morning, our Public Works Director, and Mr. Lovell, you can correct me, or Dan, you can too. But, you know, usually the DOT has, in the older days, they would have a, a two or three-hour window, you know, like at the Civic Center or somewhere where you're able to stop in. Now, they're doing that online, and I think there will be a live component at some point. But according to Mr. Sanders, there's a few different things you can do. The engineer for that portion of the project is at Southland Engineering, and you can go by their office, you can call them and set up a time to meet at their office to, to see in greater detail what that project is and ask any questions that he may be able to answer for you. The DOT office is also located, and on that postcard, I believe it has the contact information for the DOT project manager.
Correct.
The DOT office is at Cass, you know, Cass, off Cass White Road at Great Valley Parkway, and you can call and you can go up there and physically visit and see the plans and ask him any questions during those comment windows.
And really, of course.
Additionally, if you're unable to do any of those, if you would submit your comments in writing or your questions in writing to the city manager's office or to Mr. Sanders, the Public Works Director, they will forward those on to DOT for their consideration if you're unable to do that through their web portal. To answer your earlier question, if there's been public input on this, this project's been talked about for probably fifteen years at various stages. The route has changed at DOT's insistence due to archaeological or environmental issues. It's changed probably six or seven times over that time period. Where we are in the process right now is that DOT is actually proposing a proposed route. They are now soliciting public input and comment on that route, which they will then take and come up with a final package, and then that will be presented to Mayor and Council at some point in the future. Whether that's a month or ten years from now, I make no promises. And that, then Mayor and Council would consider that and then authorize to go ahead and go forward with that project as designed and approved by DOT. The stage right now is where DOT wishes to receive public comment. And they compile all that, and they then present all that back to the city, and then the city may have additional, allow additional public comment at that. But right now, the route has not been finalized per se. It may be changed as a result of this public comment. It may stay the same. We have no idea. That's gonna be up to DOT and the engineers and how they review what comment they get. So it is very important for you or anybody that wishes to have any issues with it to be involved in the process and make sure you get your comments to the Department of Transportation through the methods the mayor informs you of, or if you're unable to do the website, you know, you can turn them into the city manager's or Mr. Sanders' office, and they'll see that they are forwarded to DOT for you. Hope that answers your question a little bit.
Somewhat, yes. So who would be the ones to make the decision on the project as far as it going forward? Or who would, who would, would it be a voting thing for the city council?
Eventually, yes. Eventually, yes. At some point in time, the Department of Transportation will present a final route and a contract for construction to the city of Cartersville, and the city will then approve that. As of right now, what the city has approved is the study and the engineering related to getting to the stage of determining the final route.
Yes.
Yeah, and, you know, and DOT has said, you know, once we've determined it, we'll agree to pay eighty, ninety percent of that cost on behalf of the city. But we're not at the stage yet where the final route has been approved. That hasn't been presented to the city yet. We don't look at it till after all the engineers and the public has had their opportunity to do their speech, to be involved in that process.
Okay. Uh, the reason that I come to city council to address this is I just didn't feel like there was other ways to do that at this point, just to express my concerns with the project. I did approach my city councilman, Kerry Roth, being in that ward and ward of that city council, the city council seat for that ward, and he, he gave me the idea that they were not able to speak on the matter as far as that project.
Yeah, and let me address that to you. That's not that Mr. Roth doesn't want to speak to you.
No, no.
You know, he would love to sit down and talk to you for hours on that. Trust me, I've had to listen to Kerry for hours, but no. There are entertaining conversations, but DOT, when federal money is involved in a project, has very strict guidelines regarding when the city or our representatives can actually sit down and talk to property owners along that proposed route. We're not authorized to do that until such time as DOT has actually authorized the property acquisition process. And that process doesn't occur until the final route is selected. So we're still a ways away from being able to talk and give input back and forth to a property owner related to their property. Just, I wanted you to understand, that's not that Mr. Roth doesn't want to talk to you about it, that he would love to and have chat. That's based on our legal advice given to them from the requirements that the DOT and the federal government has whenever you're involved in one of their projects. That's why they have this public forum process. That's where DOT wants all the comments to come through. They don't want them to come through fifty different entities out there where they don't know what they are. They want to be able to have them all centralized, so they can use that to evaluate the road project.
And I guess that was part of the concern there, the inability to have a conversation about it. That concerned me. Not the details of the project. You know, I understand that you guys have limited working knowledge as far as what the details of the project may be. So, you know, that, those kind of things, but the local conversation of that project is my concern. You know, it seems like that the project that we're doing, we're allowing traffic concerns to be the driving force for that project. My concern is, you know, as a member, as of March the tenth, I'll be fifty years old. So I have been a member of Cartersville for that long, born and raised here, and having a business in town, too. I just care so much about what makes Cartersville special. And, you know, the area in which we're wanting to run that corridor through is just an area that I would consider as a citizen to be a park area. When I think of that area on Dolphet Ferry, I think of the Indian Mounds, I think the Iron Bridge, the river. I think of cotton fields, I think of Sam Smith Park and Dellinger Park, and the opportunity to enjoy an area of our downtown that's one of a kind in Cartersville, right? So that is my concern. I know the long-term project, as it's been expressed, I haven't seen it expressed necessarily in a, in a official form, is that we're gonna have a run all the way out Burn Hickory Road to, I know that this project had a comment where it was saying, "Improve connection to US four eleven and Old Alabama Road via Burn Hickory Road to the north." So that, that would be my concern, is that we're using that area that's so precious to bring a highway down through there in the idea of traffic. And I think instead of addressing traffic issues, what we're doing, in my mind, is we're encouraging traffic on that road, which would take it from being what it is to something different. And I just have personal concerns of, you know, of always wanting to be here, live and die here, of losing the things that make Cartersville special. And our park area, I mean, we don't have that anywhere else. The idea that we have, you know, an ancient civilization that once lived on our land, and we have Indian mounds out there that represent the history of our area. You guys put out a calendar, and it says, behold the beauty of our home, and pictures that we chose to go in the calendar were multiples on Dolphet Ferry and Indian mounds and the Iron Bridge on the river, which I think is all places that are special to the, the land and the things that, again, make the area special. And I just feel like to do, to do a highway in, in size and scope, that's what it appears to me. Now, I'm not a, a guy that does roadwork, but it just looks like it's a big road that we'll encourage. Now, I know there's a roundabout that's gonna be right there at the school. I do see benefits of that to deal with. School traffic release and, and, you know, dropping kids off. I do see some good things there. I do like the idea of sidewalks and opportunities for people to enjoy that area with bicycle trails, and all those things are great. I really feel like that we've really been a little slow on our development of our park area out there. You know, the idea of Sam Smith was gonna be, the Sam Smith Park was gonna be something that would continue to be an area that we could all enjoy as our community, where things are getting hard to do that as the developments continue to build around our area, to have an area where we can go and enjoy and get away from the development aspect of our community. I think that's, I just always, and, you know, I've heard comments where, you know, everybody likes progress until it's on your front doorstep, right? So please don't disregard me because I'm speaking on behalf of somebody that lives very, you know, close to Dolphet Ferry. But, you know, anything that we do in the city of Cartersville, I feel like is on my front doorstep, because this is my home. You know, it's not just worrying about my house, okay? This is worrying about the overall of all the people that live. It's not just about Sam Franklin. It's about all of our community and, and having what's special. You know, when we don't have the Indian Mounds, Dellinger Park, Sam Smith Park, Pi- Pine Mountain, when we don't have the four-way, when we don't have, uh, hear you guys on the radio on WBHF, that's the things that make Cartersville special to me. You know, the, once all those things go away, then it's just, it's not Cartersville anymore, you know? The people make Cartersville, the, the home that we've made here, and the special place that we've got that's Cartersville. I just want to preserve and protect those things. And when a project, when I feel like a project is, is going to affect that, it just, that, that would be my concern. I know that the, uh, it said minimizing impacts to property in environmentally sensitive areas. I mean, that whole area I would consider to fall under that category. So I think to run through there with, with the project, especially with long-term of, you know, we're gonna bring traffic all the way from four eleven down to connect, it, it just is a lot of concerns. And of course, everybody always says, well, you know, if you're going to, you know, go against our solution, well, but do you have a solution? And I actually do. It's, I, I do have, and I, I would like for you guys to consider this. I'm not an engineer that can plan projects, but, you know, knowing that area, and, and I can speak to the traffic habits in Dolphet Ferry, too, because I drive it four times a day, and, and multiple times of other, you know, ins and outs. So I, I know the traffic concerns, accidents, I'm not familiar with accidents. And accidents may be down there on the other end where we get into one thirteen and sixty-one. I would assume that the majority of those accidents are down there. I don't know of accidents on my end. I know that was expressed as a concern. But I did have a, a project in mind for a road. This would be adding an additional road, not widening Dolphet, but adding an additional road as a project that would, instead of having one road that's widened, would be two roads to address traffic concerns and go along with the long-term corridor of Burn Hickory Road, you know, to address people wanting to get across town, but not bring it through our park area. So I would like to submit that, if you guys are of interest to do that.
If there's something you want to submit, if you will hand it to our clerk, because she'll need to get it added to the record, and she can make copies and distribute it, or is that?
Any information I would need from me as far as that goes, very curious, just on my cell phone, and I put some lines that would be.
Very curious, just on my cellphone, and I put some lines that would be at least a recommendation in the way of something different than widening Dolphet Ferry. And, and I would like, if there was opportunities, if you guys could tell me more on a local level, I know DOT is kinda handling the details of that project as far as, but it is a city project there, right? Yeah, so DOT's handling the details, but I know it's a city project. So, you know, if there's opportunities for us to speak locally on it, you know, the DOT doesn't know Cartersville. The DOT is not members of Cartersville, so they don't know it from a personal standpoint of, you know, the things that we want to protect and preserve in Cartersville. So, um, did you guys, any questions for me? I ca- I think I kinda said everything that I wanted to say. But I do appreciate the work that you guys do in representing us in Cartersville. I know you do it because you care about Cartersville, you love Cartersville, you love the people of Cartersville. And I appreciate the work that you do in representing us on especially things like this, the impact or community in, in a concerning way, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir.
I did want to let you know that until Febu- the DOT comment period is available until February eleventh. That is when it ends for this project. So if you wish to make any comments or have the city forward any written comments or anything for you, like your plan or anything like that, you've got until February eleventh to get that in to them. I just wanted to make, make you aware.
And I was aware of that, and that, and that was kinda some of my push to go ahead and come, knowing there was a City Council meeting tonight. It seemed like there was an accelerated effort in this project that might have not been there before, so that was a concern for me as well. If details and decisions were gonna be made, I, I wasn't sure, because to put information into a website, you know, when you ask a question, if I say, okay, let me give you a question, well, in answering that question may pose additional questions. So I, I really didn't know how to just put questions into a website. I mean, this is how I talk something out, and, and that was one of the concerns that I had. It was like we couldn't talk about it. And I'm, and I understand that there's rules of the game.
Trust me, we feel, we feel the same way that you do about it.
Yeah, and I understand there's rules of a game that we have to play by, but as far as dollars and money and things like that, I know it looked like on the plan that maybe we had already spent, uh, one point eight million dollars in preliminary engineering. But even if we've spent money on a project, is no reason to go forward with it. I mean, if, if I can continue to give my tax dollars as a resident in Cartersville, if I need to give additional dollars, I would do that to protect and preserve the things that we hold dear in our community. So to, to say we've spent one point eight million dollars on preliminary engineering, if, if I'm reading that right, is not a reason to go forward with a project. So I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll thank you and all the other folks that came here tonight. And again, I'll, I'll echo your comments, or basically the blanket fact that, the, the fact that we have people that care about this community, and I speak for everybody in this room, from staff members to everybody that serves on council, I think we all want what's best for our city, and we work every day to try to make the place a, a better place and be able to preserve a lot of those values that you talked about, so. One last item I would like to mention, earlier this week, former Mayor Clyde Charles passed waves, aged ninety-seven, served on the City Council, including two terms as mayor, and just wanted to note that for people that may not have, have known that, so. That being said, is there any other business that needs to come forward, Council? If not, Chair wanted to take a motion to adjourn. Take it.